And on the properties facing Cedar Street, that is a ten-foot easement, ten feet deep. That property has been filled in, that easement has been filled in, at the encouragement and authorization of the city engineer. I am making a request that these ordinances be enforced. As has been on record to date, the situation at 141 is creating chronic and ongoing water problems, flood problems, for the surrounding neighbors, and they are not being addressed. I personally am asking that the city remove, or have the property owner remove, the fill that was used to raise the property line within the easement. Clear the easement and return it to its original level, the level at which it was sold to that property owner in March of, I believe it was 2007. I am also requesting, and this is subsequent to a conversation that I held and witnessed by others with the city engineer, who was going to request that property owner to deflect or to discharge his water that is normally discharged to the back, meaning he has one, two, I believe it's three downspouts, one primary sump pump, and one auxiliary sump pump for the new addition that he's put on, that were being discharged into the back of the property, which has, since those things have been done in the last year to year and a half now, possibly going on two, created severe flooding, which we can document by Films, Clark, Mosquito, and by conversations that we have had with the city engineer and the building department, who have been repeatedly out and addressed this issue. Currently, the sump pump that is being, that was installed in the new addition appears to be directed around the side of the house and into the front. The proposition was to be placed to the homeowner, that he would alleviate the burdens that are being placed on the surrounding neighbors if at least the original home sump pump discharge would be directed to the front of the property and thereby into the storm drains. As has been with the property that butts up against the back of him, which discharges into Iroquois, and the sewers there are not able to hold it. And my property, which was given permission in 1991 to discharge virtually three, everything, my sump pump, my auxiliary sump pump, and the two front downspouts, and one back downspout to the front, in order to alleviate our vulnerability to flooding. And it has worked. We have maintained the balance and the dry conditions within the last, up until about two years ago, when all of this started. And that new property owner created a critical situation, shall we say, the balance has been tipped. So those are my requests. Please enforce the ordinances that are there, at least as they pertain to that easement. And it would be going a long way, in the words of the city engineer, to restoring a drier condition to the neighbors surrounding this property and to the goodwill in the neighborhood if this property owner would discharge the stormwater runoff from his building, which by the way is now half again the size it was originally, to the front. That's my request.
Thank you. I do acknowledge your receipt for the record of a survey dated January 29, 1970, for Lot 13 on Cedar E. Avenue. I do have a question for you, though. The back of the rear yard of the lot is shown as utility easement. Do you have any documentation to show that it's a drainage easement?
I do not have it at my fingertips, but I can assure you that I can get Ted Dekka testify to this, okay?
Drop that off at my office here.
I will, I will get it as soon as I can. You are leaving a burden on me of, I don't know how the devil you think stormwater was drained from the back of these properties from 1970 until about 2006, '07?
No, I'm just trying to clarify. You made the statement that it was a drainage easement.
It has, it is exactly where the swale existed.
You made the statement that this was a drainage easement. So I'm just questioning, do you have any documentation that this subdivision was created with rear yard drainage easements? Because it's not mentioned here on the survey.
No, it is listed as a utility easement. And it was the only drainage there was for the backs of this, the properties facing Iroquois, the properties facing Cedar, and some of the properties facing Montrose. I don't know how else you, you think it, there are no drain pipes, but yes, I will do my utmost to verify this. But once again, I get the feeling that I'm being run around because at that meeting, there seemed to be no question that if there were an easement there, from those who have looked at it, including some of the aldermen, that this is the only drainage that was ever built into it.
That's not necessarily true, unfortunately. So if you do have some additional documentation-
Thank you.
-to show that that was a dedicated drainage easement, then we can enforce it against the subdivision. Does anyone else wish to address the city council this evening? If not, under mayor's report, I do have two communications. One is from Donna and Carl of 474 Knollwood. Just a quick thank you for employing the best bunch of guys. The work done in front of our house, the hydrant replacement was done in such a clean, neat, and pleasant manner. Your gentlemen were very careful not to disturb my newly planted flowers and kept my drive in the street as they found it. Job well done. Many thanks from Donna and Carl of 474 Knollwood. On a more sober note, I'm receipt of a letter from Super Value. This is the Osko Distribution Center, Dear Mayor Johnson, this is to inform you that Super Value, Inc. will close its facility located at 855 Wooddale Road, Wooddale, Illinois. This action is expected to be permanent. The facility will be entirely closed effective March 1, 2010. Enclosed is a listing of the job titles and the positions to be affected and the number of affected employees in each classification. We expect that all employee separations will take place beginning November 24, 2009, and ending when the facility closes March 2010. We'll provide updated information as you request. Some of the employees at the facility are represented by a union. The name of the union is United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 881. Name and address of the elected, I'll pass over that part. Employees are represented by this union have bumping rights within the bargaining unit. However, since the facility will be closing, those bumping rights will not be exercisable. I contacted them, and the loss of jobs to the city of Wooddale at that facility is 111 jobs are being eliminated and not replaced, and they do not have a future tenant for And that brings us to the manager's report. Mr. Manager?
It seems like only yesterday, when the city council met to approve the fiscal year 2010 budget, and it's time again, ladies and gentlemen. In early November, we're going to, Brad Wilson and I, the finance director and I, are going to give you a recap of the audit for fiscal 2009, a six-month status report for this fiscal year, and some projections for the next year coming up, so you'll have a better idea of where we might be with respect to our finances. We've already started internal work to revise our five-year capital improvement program, and we expect to get that to the city council in February for review. And shortly after the review of the revenues in November, we will start the budget process for fiscal year 2011, with the goal of getting that to the city council in March. So we're going to be busy internally, and we expect that you will be equally as busy as you start to crunch the numbers and see where we are. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any objections, any items on the consent agenda? Alderman, please.
Actually, it's a question I'm not sure, maybe it's a legal question. Item number one, there was supposed to be some stipulations on this resolution. Are those not, if we pass this as is, the stipulations are gone, or what's the deal?
Mr. Bond?
If those stipulations aren't include, well, what you're doing on that is you're giving the approval, include the stipulations that you want to have included within that. I think those were, came from the recommendation from the committee.
Right, but when does the formal resolution come up? Next council meeting, or is this, we're passing it here and there's no stipulations on this?
That would come up at the next council meeting.
So then they'll be in there.
Right.
And same thing, and then with the sidewalks, it says, we're adding them to the capital improvement projects, but again, there's also a stipulation there that if, if there were funds available, right? So that same thing here.
We'll, we'll put, we'll try to program that into next year's, the next five-year CIP, funds available. I don't, I don't expect that there's going to be a problem with funding, that we will have enough money to be able to incorporate that, but that will be incorporated into the five-year capital improvement program as we go through that for the next month or so.
Okay, so in two weeks, when we get the resolutions on all these, all those stipulations will be there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, there's not going to be a resolution on number eight, on the approval. That just gives staff direction to put it in the CIP.
Alderman Shockey?
To have number one removed from the consent agenda?
That will be done. Alderman Lewitin?
Mayor, when I reviewed the insurance certificate from Christie's Restaurant for the coffee shop, I noticed deficiencies on the certificate, and I talked to Wally about that, and I talked to Costas, and he said he would take care of them. They were, that his aggregate was too low, it should be double his occurrence. He did not have proof that his workman's comp limit met the underlying limit requirement of his umbrella. In his documents to us, he did not show that the policy that he had was extended to a second location, and Mr. Forrest informed me of the exact address of the train station, 199 East Division Street. That should be on the certificate of insurance under the notes, and then the certificate wasn't properly filled out. So while I'm certainly in favor of it, and these changes are a very small premium matter to him, I want to know that the approval of this will still be concurrent upon his meeting our specs. In addition, in the packet that was given to him, Metro had sent a sample of a certificate of insurance, which they wanted. However, in examining it, it said contractor on the top. I believe that the coverages that they were asking for were in excess of what a leased property should be, and I asked the city manager, who then asked John Forrest to contact the Metro attorney, who sent this letter that's on our desk, that was arrived today, that indeed the sample certificate of insurance that was given to us is not applicable to Christie's as a leasee. And I would like to make sure that we keep this in the file, that we are not disobeying Metro in our contract relations with them, that they are the ones who verified that that certificate sample they sent us was only for contractors, even though we were intending to use it for a lease agreement. Are these things inherently in our agreement when we pass this consent order, or do we have to stipulate that the consent is, that he should be in conformity with our insurance requirements?
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I think you've got to include that as part of the, if that's going to be a condition that you want, that should be included as part of the item on the agenda. So I think, my suggestion would be to remove that item and make a motion specifically setting forth the conditions you believe are appropriate and necessary.
And also, not necessary, because I analyzed that he should not need railroad liability insurances was on that sample. And we got a letter now that, even though I read it, it doesn't come down and actually say it. That's what the attorney, Keith Partman, is intended to mean, and that's how he conveyed it to Mr. Forrest. So we should also have the-
Are you asking that item three be removed?
According to the attorney, I am, yes.
Okay. Any other objections to any of the items on the agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda being items two, four through 12? Two and four through 12. Is there such a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman, favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion parried. Now may I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda being approval of payment amount of $85,000 to Huckstorf, Inc. for demolition of 110 and 136 Commercial, approval of change order number five, Metro Train Station, approval of change order number six, approval of 2010 Perry Fest, approval of an ordinance submitting Chapter 15, Article 5, approval to include sidewalks on Oak Avenue, approval of contract award to Wooddale Decorative Street Lighting, approval of contract award Wooddale Decorative Street, two contracts to Wooddale Decorative Street Lighting, approval of payment request number three to MQ Construction, and approval of south extension of New Alley behind Wooddale Road between Sunnyside and Montrose. Is there such a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Those items are approved. Item seven is approved as ordinance O-09-26. The two items that will be, that were removed will be taken up under other business. That brings us to committee chairman reports, planning and zoning and building. Alderman Lewitin?
Thank you, Mayor. Under Public Works Committee, approval of payment request number three to RW-
PCB?
I'm sorry.
Planning, zoning, and building? Are you, you're not, you are the vice chair?
Right, right. Mayor, do I have the current one? I don't see PCB on here.
Do you have a motion to approve a resolution, City Wooddale authorizing-
Oh, there it is.
... a grant application?
I'm sorry. A resolution of the City of Wooddale authorizing submittal of a grant application to the Federal Aviation Authority for development of a land use plan for the Thorndale Corridor area.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? On the question? Roll call. Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
That's approved as resolution R-09-17. That conclude your report?
That concludes my report. And does anybody have anything they want for future on here?
That would not be appropriate at this time.
Okay.
Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary, Alderman Shockey?
No report.
Public Works, Alderman Felice, your vice chair? Or no, I'm sorry, Alderman Coles?
Yes. Approval of payment request three, partial for RW Dunhaman for 2009, street improvement in the amount of $272,256.88.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second to the motion? On the question, Alderman Felice?
Is this the one where we're either taking a two-year warranty? I'm not sure.
Yes.
Southway?
Yes.
So if we take the warranty and they're not going to fix Pine Tree Lane, is that the one?
We're going to, we're going to hold back money for, until the end of the project to make sure that the streets in that particular subdivision have been, have been done to our satisfaction, and Dunhaman has given us a guarantee of the work for the next two years. Is that correct, Mr. Graff?
That's correct. Dunhaman has given us an extended warranty on those sections of Royal Oaks, which is the patching area in question. However, this payment request has subtracted the amount of money covered under the, under that work, so we are going to have to decide before the job is closed out to either redo that or accept the warranty and give them their money, basically.
Alderman Felice?
So they're not going to fix Pine Tree Lane, we're just, if the council decides to take the two-year warranty, those cracks that are in those cul-de-sacs are going to stay, correct?
It's not- If the council decides to accept the warranty, and again, that doesn't have to be decided tonight-
Right, I understand, but-
-before the job's closed out, because we're still withholding that money. But, right, if they take, if you take the warranty, they're not going to do any more out there. If we have them fix it, then the warranty is not going to be part of that.
Okay. Who else was seeking recognition? Alderman Wesley?
That were, Mr. Nunzi already answered my question. Thank you.
Anything, anything further? Roll call. Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
No.
Call the mayor? Mayor Johnson? Mayor votes yes, that passes. Does that conclude your report, Alderman Coles?
That concludes my report.
Finance Administration, Alderman Winger?
I have no report.
And that brings us to other business, first item, manager, Southway.
I've asked Mr. Clicker to prepare a PowerPoint that outlines the, some of the discussion with respect to the sales tax sharing request. Some of, most of what we're going to show, you have seen in your staff memo. This is really for the benefit of the, the citizens in the audience and anyone who might be watching on, on cable TV. In early September, representatives of Thornton's Incorporated came to the council with a request for a special use to construct a convenience store and gasoline station at the southwest corner of Wooddale, excuse me, of Wooddale and Devon Avenue. Included with that were two conditions. Number one, that the council would give the company a liquor license to sell packaged liquor at the site, and another condition that we enter into some sort of a sales tax sharing agreement to close the gap between the rent paid and the amount necessary for the developer and the property owner to, to make an appropriate amount of, of money on the deal. The council approved that special, special use request conditioned upon the staff meeting with the developer and negotiating a sales tax sharing agreement that was acceptable to all parties. And since September the 10th, I've been meeting on almost a weekly basis with representatives of Golo International Development Corporation and Thornton Incorporated, Incorporated, to craft some sort of a sales tax sharing agreement that would benefit all of the parties. And I want to go through that with you tonight. The estimate from Thornton is that the gross annual sales at that location, assuming a gas price of $2.50 a gallon, would generate $125,000 a year in the city's share of the state sales tax, and would also generate $125,000 a year in the city's city-only sales tax, which is earmarked for capital improvements, roads, sewers, that kind of thing. So we've run some numbers on that, and if we assume that the $125,000 to the, to the general fund is a valid number, and if we've assumed an inflationary rate of 2%, the proposal, the most recent proposal to the city was that the city would get the first $15,000 of any sales tax generated. Anything annually over $115,000 would be split 50/50 between the developer and the city. In year two, the first $15,000 would be generated and kept by the city, and the balance 50/50 distribution, up until the developer had realized one and a quarter million dollars or 20 years, whichever came first. That is, if the 20-year span cap occurred before the million and a quarter was generated, the deal would end at that point. If they recoup the million and a quarter before the 20 years, the arrangement would be terminated at that time. So if you see over the next five years, assuming $2.5 per gallon of gas and assuming a 2% inflation rate, in year one, the project is anticipated to generate $125,000. The city's distribution would be $70,000, $15,000 plus 50% of the balance. The developer would recoup $55,000. And on the right side of the screen is the numbers that would be retained by the city as part of the city-only sales tax earmarked for capital improvements. We made it very clear from the outset that that city-only sales tax was not part of the revenue sharing proposal, that when the council went to referendum several years ago, they earmarked that for capital improvements, and that was not part of the deal. And in year two, assuming a 2% increase, the city would generate $71,250. The developer would generate $56,250. Again, we'd keep all of the city-only sales tax. You see what happens in year three, year four, year five, and Ross, if you could give me a subtotal after five years, with this, with these assumptions, the city would see $362,000 and change, the developer would see $287,000 and change, and the city, as part of its city-only sales tax, would recoup $650,500 to be earmarked for capital improvements. Next one, Ross? Now, since 1993, there have been two other sales tax agreements that have been executed by the city. In 1993, we did a sales tax agreement with Jewel and Target. In early 2000s, we did a sales tax agreement with Mayor Lumber, and Ross, if you'll throw those numbers up there. The term of the Jewel-Target agreement was 10 years. With Mayor Lumber, it was five, and the request from Thornton's is 20 years. The threshold, that is, the first amount of dollars to be kept by the city, was $310,000 with Jewel, $95,000 with Mayor Lumber, and $15,000 proposed with Thornton's. And the cap was $1.5 million for Jewel and Target, $200,000 for Mayor Lumber, and $1,250. Now, on the surface, that seems like a pretty generous split of dollars, and I've been concerned about, go back to that if you would, Ross. I've been concerned about that in the discussions with the developers, because it appears that, on an acre site, that this is disproportionate to what we've granted in the past 15 years or so. Okay, Ross? Now, the developer has said, we understand that, but we've got a gap to, to close. The gas station company can only afford to pay a certain amount in rent. The owner of the property have some extraordinary costs associated with the acquisition and preparation of the site, and there appears to be a gap there that they've asked the city to close. And I started taking a look at that, and they raised a real interesting proposition. If we don't like this deal and we don't want to enter into some sort of a sales tax sharing agreement, the alternative-